Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please proceed. Ms. Snyder, would you please read the roll?
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Smith?
Lawler?
Here.
Spicer?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
And Mayor Atchison?
Here. Thank you. And I remind my colleagues, please make sure we're all speaking through the mic, so that the folks at home watching the video can hear, as well as everybody in the gallery. First item is approval of the agenda, and I have Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I have, I would like to ask for a motion for under consent calendar, Agenda Item B, be moved to a discussion item, C?
We'll make it Item, yes, Item C. Okay? And the scope of that, after having consulted with the city attorney and the city manager at length today, will be expanded to include, we'll not only talk about the vacancy, but the discussion and vote by council to remove for cause. Any other corrections or changes? City Attorney, did you want to state that differently?
No, but I think just as a matter of procedure to add to the agenda, that was something that wasn't on there, I believe you needed a vote of five council members.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote if there's any other changes to the agenda, and once we figure that out, then we'll do a roll call vote. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay. Okay, yeah, that would be helpful. All right, so the motion is to modify the agenda, to remove or to move Item B from the consent calendar to Item C, new Item C, under Items for Individual Discussion, and to include a vote by council for removal for cause. Would you please read the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison.
Yes, I want to clarify that we are voting to make that change. It could be my hearing, but I thought I heard two hears, as opposed to two yeses, so...
No, it was all yeses.
Okay, thank you, that was my mistake. Okay. All right. So the agenda is approved as modified. First item is the oath of office for Councilman Al Smith. And I'm going to ask the city attorney to read the oath of office, or I will use your computer, whichever you prefer. All right, so Mr. Councilman Smith? If you would come down here in front, and I'll stand here and read, and we'll... Or you, yeah, it works fine. All right. Mr. Smith?
Morning, my friend.
Well, we can move this way, so people can see you. How about that? Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Al Smith..."
"I, Al Smith..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"And I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of this state..."
"And the Constitution of this state..."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Council Representative for Precinct 3."
"And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Council Person of Precinct 3."
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir. Okay. All right. And I think that exception to the rules of permitting applaud and recognizing is absolutely appropriate today. Okay, first one is, we did the oath of office, next is an update by Ms. Linda Lanu on Project Rising Tide.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Atchison, City Manager McClary, and all things Haley Snyder. Didn't expect you. My name is Linda Lanu. I am the Community Development Fellow assigned to the community for Project Rising Tide. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that and where it stands, but I did want to give two updates on projects that have been underway. The first one that I've been closely involved with is the workforce development, which in looking over different things, I recognize it's being tackled from a lot of angles. So I just wanted to share the work that I've been a part of, and acknowledge that we, the whole purpose of Project Rising Tide is to collaborate, so we really want to encourage that in all ways. We had a committee that you all approved, and the EDC hired a couple new staff members, so they helped out as well with the committee. From that, survey was conducted, asking people if they were interested in receiving additional resources regarding accessing employment, et cetera. And from that, Tanaka Thomas and Sharon Pons, who both specialize in this work and have deep roots in the community, contacted everyone who said they were interested, and held four focus groups. And based on what they learned from that outreach, there will be further work that continues to happen. And all of that is, of course, to help our workforce. And I know other people, like I said, are approaching that from different angles. We recognize that, according to different statistics, over 60 percent of people in our community are unable to meet basic needs, and that is very closely tied to workforce, and there's a lot of other factors involved with workforce. So we're trying, we are working comprehensively, looking at those various factors, and looking forward to offer more formal recommendations on what we learn. We also have been in the process of doing work for the Downtown Development Authority, and there will be a plan before you after the New Year regarding the updates that are underway for what's called a development plan, so that's a long look out. And again, that is in collaboration with the other plans that have been in place. Right now, the requirement is to have a Citizens Council of residents of the downtown, who both live and represent downtown. So we are in the process of assembling that group, and I'm pretty sure all of you have to approve those people as well. So then, the last thing that I just want to say is, kind of long, I'm going to try to shorten it, because I know you have a long agenda. And essentially, I, as the Community Development Fellow and a native of our community, do feel morally obligated to speak on matters of the community, and I know this isn't necessarily the time and place, but a lot of things have been brought to you, and because the community does have access to it, it is a place for that. What I did want to just acknowledge is that I know that the people of our community have gone through a series of losses, and most recently, there's been some very serious tragedies. And I just wanted to, as the fellow in this role that is supposed to be spurring collaboration, acknowledge that a lot of things are happening behind the scenes, and those take a lot of time to be able to see the outcome. So I wanted to thank everyone who is working diligently. I know all of you are essentially doing this work voluntarily, and so I wanted to thank all of you. I have been very encouraged by what I have seen from our new city manager regarding public, authentic public engagement. And from what I understand, in this role, that has to be done by people who reflect the community, in order for it to be done well and to not cause more harm. So even though I am a native of here, I recognize that I do not reflect the needs of the entire community. And so I would be remiss to not state that, in this role, I wish I could have done more, but without the authority and guidance of a city manager, I have not felt that that is appropriate. Nonetheless, my position is ending in this role soon, and so I do have to, you know, check some boxes and close some loose ends. So if you see things coming from Rising Tide, it is a reflection of the entire community. It is my attempt to share Albion's story and get it to a wider audience. Rising Tide has access to a very large network, and there are so many amazing things to share in the midst of everything that is happening. And so I just wanted to kind of acknowledge that that's where I'm at in this process, and I recognize our community is also in a phase of immense change and growth, so I just wanted to thank everyone for everything that they're doing in those roles. Are there any questions regarding this?
Councilwoman Clark.
Could you give us what were the three, I'm sure there were multiple, but at least three barriers that the public...
Absolutely. The two that we knew going in were transportation. There's a few different ways of approaching that, but I actually have talked with our state representatives about that. And in a rural area, the best way to address that is not the more traditional bus routes, because people are in so many different areas. It would be the more agile system of like ride-sharing or Uber-lift, that concept. And I think the biggest barrier to accessing that is the liability assurance, insurance that a driver has to have. So we would like to look into how we could accommodate that. I'm trying to do a lot of things in these last couple of months, having a city manager here, but I know he has so many things he has to do, so, yeah, we are looking into how we can basically support the people who are wanting to provide that service in the community. Child care is the second biggest one. Again, the state has new regulations on that, that I think has made it even more of a challenge. And then I would say, the last one, which is what both Tanaka and Sharon specialize in, is the life skills, which, you know, you can point all different ways regarding how that's gotten to be at the point it has, but there's a lot of different things we can do, and there's a lot of very skilled and qualified community members who reflect the needs of our community, that I'm sure will be glad to help in that space.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for Ms. Lanu regarding Project Rising Tide?
I guess I did forget probably one of the most important things. So I hope to be back before you before the end of the year. However, if I am unable to, I just wanted to share that there will be a final celebratory event, where we can look at all of the things that our city as a whole has accomplished, and really take a moment to reflect, and see where we stand as well. And we're anticipating that after the New Year, possibly, in as late as March, just to give everybody ample time to be there.
So I did note you said that the DDA Workforce Development Plan would be provided, submitted sometime after the New Year.
Oh, no, we can provide formal recommendations. We can gather those, and I can compile those. I could get those to you by the end of the week. It's just an ongoing process that we have to learn and glean from.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions for Ms. Lanu? Thank you, and thank you for your service on this very important project.
Thank you. Of course.
Next item, we are going to defer the recreation update due to a scheduling snafu. Mr. Williams is not here this evening to give us that update, but we will absolutely have him here on the 2nd of December. And we'll ask the city manager if he can please provide a written report, because Councilmember Williamson is not going to be able to be here on the 2nd of December, correct? So we want to make sure that, and perhaps, if you have time, Councilmember...
No, I have to talk to my...
Okay. All right, thank you. So the next one we're going to move to is Albion-a-Glow, and I'd invite our very gifted President of our Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, Mr. Eric Worley.
Good evening, everyone. Everyone's got a good start of their week so far. My name is Eric Worley. I'm the President and CEO of the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, and we're here to talk about the holiday season. So Albion-a-Glow is coming up on December 6th, and that's our annual celebration of the holidays. We have scheduled events that evening, and then some things leading up to that evening. So on the big day, Friday, December 6th, we're kicking things off with a new kind of event incentive to get people out in downtown, and this is being spearheaded by Scott Evans and the entire staff at Homestead Savings Bank. They're doing what they're calling a cash mob. And what they're going to do is have some of their staff outside of the stretch of buildings between the Foundry and the Brewery, between 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock on December 6th, handing out $5 bills. Not gift cards, not certificates, not IOUs, cold, hard cash, with the incentive of getting people to go into some of our downtown businesses and spend that money. So that'll be between 4:00 and 5:00 on December 6th. And then, we're going to move up the street to Bernalis Park at 5:00 for our community sing-along, and the lighting of the tree, that'll be in Bernalis Park. We'll also be announcing the winner of the downtown window decorating contest at that time, so any businesses in the downtown area, if you want to make your windows festive, however you see fit. On Thursday, December 5th, we'll have judges going around that evening, looking at all the displays, and then they'll announce their winner Friday night at the tree lighting. The parade will then kick off at 6:00 at Washington Gardner, heading the normal parade route west to Superior Street, and then down Superior Street, all the way past the brewery and the, and Homestead. We're going to stop at Kids &amp; Stuff and let Santa off the fire truck, and Santa will be meeting with everyone at Kids &amp; Stuff around 6:45, between 6:45 and 7:00, and he'll stay until all the kids have had their wishes heard. And then, the brewery is going to have live music. I think they're having a jazz night at 7:00 that evening. So starting at 4:00 with some free money, all the way until 7:00 with some free music. Should be a pretty festive evening, hopefully the weather's not too frightful. And this kind of ends the week-long event of Albion-a-Glow and Albion Land. Couple years ago, we started a kind of support our small business initiative, where we do passports, game cards, people go around, they get stamps, get signed, and they have a chance to win prizes. So this year, we have little booklets that can be picked up from the participating businesses, from the Chamber of Commerce, from the Luddington Center. And we're incentivizing people to go out to our participating local businesses, just go in, see who they are, talk to whoever's working there, get your card signed, just so you can be more aware of who we have in our community and the different things that we have to offer here in Albion. We'll have some prizes to give away. We're going to have a Kindle Fire as one of the prizes, an Echo Dot little home speaker you can have, some prizes from some local businesses, like the Bohm &amp; Kids &amp; Stuff. So that starts on Small Business Saturday, so we're going to transition to the next item on the agenda, the Small Business Saturday, if that's allowed by...
Yes, but one quick comment. I'm pretty sure that Homestead will also have people for their cash mob in front of Sterling Books &amp; Brew. So two locations, one at South Superior, one down in front of the bookstore. Again, $5 bills, please go in and spend it in the merch.
Yep, the one at Sterling's going to be on that Small Business Saturday on the 30th. So cash mob on December 6th at the Foundry and PR Albion and the Brewery. And then on Small Business Saturday, November 30th, it's the first Saturday after Thanksgiving, that's when the game kicks off, and that's when we're going to, everyone's going to go out and spend a bunch of money at our local businesses and support our friends and neighbors. And Homestead's going to make that easier, because they're going to give you $5 bills outside of Sterling Books &amp; Brew. You can spend it at Sterling, at Dickerson, at Lopez, or any other place you see fit in the area, but they'll be handing out money there between 10:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. on November 30th. So two opportunities to get some money to spend downtown. We'll have the passports to play the game available at all the participating businesses, and at the Chamber, at the Luddington Center, so you can pick them up there. And then you can turn in those booklets to the Chamber by Monday, December 9th, and we'll be picking winners soonly, soon after that, once we tabulate how many people get signatures. You don't have to fill the book to win. We'd like everyone to get their book filled with signatures, but just one signature passport stamp on your book gets you eligible to win a prize. So shop early, shop often, support our friends and neighbors here in town, and let's just have a great kickoff to the holiday season.
Any questions by Council on Albion-a-Glow or Small Business Saturday? Thank you, Mr. Worley.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Next item is the update on the committee working on the, bringing a second grocery store to Albion, and I'll let Ms. Clark tee that up as the council representative in charge of that.
So we have data that, from all the surveys that I have collected, and all the council members have the actual report, and I'm going to have one of my co-partners present the data to you. It definitely spells out what we've always thought, but there's more work that has to be done. So this is where we're at for now. Clarissa?
Good evening. My name is Corinne Atchison, and I was working with Councilmember Clark on this. And what we have learned is that we decided that the best thing to do is to put out a survey. Ask people where they're spending their money, how much money they're spending, where they would like that money to go. And we put out 443 surveys. Well, we put out more, but 443 were completed. Not everyone was completed, was answered every question, but we did get 443. Forty-nine of those came from the Internet, the rest were furnished through Festival of the Forks. We had people walking around, we had a table that we would solicit people to fill them out. What we found is very interesting. We found that most people spend at least $150 on their groceries a month, families and people. We also found that they're not spending a whole lot in Albion. Most people that do spend their money in Albion are only doing it to pick up groceries here and there, they just need something quick. They're not doing the bulk of their grocery shopping here. Eighty-one percent of grocery monies are being spent outside of Albion. Most of them are being spent at Walmart, and Myers, and Save-A-Lot. This is, we're bleeding money here. Most people, when asked what kind of grocery store they'd like in Albion, went with Walmart. And I, we think that the reason they went with Walmart is because mostly of transportation issues. Walmart is kind of like a little mini mall, you can pick up just about everything there and your groceries, and that's why they would like that. They would also like a Save-A-Lot, or an Aldi's. Kroger was mentioned. They would like a grocery store placed on Eaton more than any other place. Another place they would like it is maybe downtown, but up on North Eaton is their choice. They are looking mostly for vegetables, fruits, and selective meats. That's what they're looking for. Most of the people that the survey hit were people that lived here in Albion, the 49224 area code. But we picked up people from Homer, Springport, some from Spring Arbor, so we, and the reason we wanted to pick them up is because they're also shopping. They're shopping here, they're shopping at the Dax, and we wanted to know where they were shopping too. Because if we could get a second grocery store here, maybe we could collect that. In a 10-mile radius of Albion there is 30,000 people. So somewhere in there, we do have the numbers where we could support a second grocery store. We're looking into the marketing of Albion, along with the EDC, and to do everything that we can to make sure that we get a second grocery store. So now that we have these numbers, and we can talk to grocery stores, find out who is privatized, who isn't, and maybe we can entice them to come here. And we also wanted to use this information to make sure that we can talk to Family Fair and show them just how much money is leaving this town. And if they could improve upon their prices, improve upon their store, improve upon their selections, you know, that could help us out a lot, too. Any questions?
Questions from Council?
So I just want to add.
Councilwoman Clark.
So there was a lot of supporting agencies in town that helped us with this survey, and I want to say thank you to Michigan Works, to the senior building, where they go and do all the exercises and stuff, our medical center. These were other places that took the surveys, actually, they hired copies and presented to people as they went to appointments. That is one of the reasons why we had such a high number. I printed 500, so we did pretty good for the return of how many I got back. Again, we're going to look into more private things. Aldi's, there's some specifications that Aldi's and some of the bigger chains want, as far as to come here in this area. Not that we're going to give up on that. I'm not a person that gives up on anything easy. You have to basically tell me to get out of your face when I get on a bandwagon. So I'm going to push as much as I can. I would say to anybody that likes to do that type of thing, when we start, because we're going to present these numbers to Aldi's and some of these that were recommended by you, by the public, to them to get our answer. But it can also help if you can go online and send information to them, and make a statement, you know, because when there's voices behind data and a pool like that, you often can get results quicker than just one person. So I want to thank everybody that took the survey. I think it was successful.
Have you determined what the next step is in your project? What are you going to do next?
So we're going to select the grocery stores, go to them, give them the data. We have a letter that has been typed by EDC to, of information of why and what perks, if I can use that word, would benefit them to come in this area. And we're all going to go to different select areas to look. We're going to also go to private grocery stores, so I'm still open to that. If anybody knows smaller, private-owned grocery stores that you would be interested in, please feel free to call me and leave me a, or leave me an email. And we're going to do the legwork from there. And then, once we get, you know, we go and offer what we, or what we're looking for, then EDC will take it from there and actually be the ones that try to make it happen.
Thank you.
A quick question.
Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. So did, are you going to approach the stores that had the large numbers here?
Yes.
If you decided that?
Yes.
Okay, so, all right, thank you.
Because, for instance, Walmart, although we know we can't get a big Walmart, but there is a such thing as mini Walmarts, maybe some of you guys have saw them in other smaller communities, and they don't have everything that the Walmart has, but that's how they often start those in smaller communities. Until people tell me no, I'm going to check with anybody I can.
Thank you. Next item is updates on tax issues and concerns impacting Albion-area nonprofit organizations. Our city tax assessor, Joshua Cummings.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Josh Cunningham. I'm the city assessor. I spoke with the mayor, he asked me to see if I was able and available to join this evening. Maybe there's some current concerns or questions that the council members had, and so...
Don't you name it?
Joshua Cunningham.
Cunningham.
Yes, ma'am.
So exactly what is it you do?
I'm the tax assessor.
Okay.
The city assessor.
Okay.
So I think there were some questions particularly involving the tax exemptions on some nonprofit organizations and properties recently.
Okay.
So can you just...
Councilwoman Spicer.
So can you just elaborate on that?
Um, well, yeah, there were a couple, I guess, that, you know, as far as the email, there was, we are going to the Michigan Tax Tribunal this upcoming, December 2nd, we have a hearing.
Just a second, Michigan, city attorney.
Before our assessor gets too far into this, I just want to express to council that it would probably not be appropriate to discuss pending litigation in a public forum. So, I mean, certainly the assessor can answer generalized questions, but given that it's a, that there's pending cases in the tax tribunal, probably not something we want to get into detail in a public meeting.
Thank you. So without any of us mentioning any specific affected nonprofit, a general question would be, at present, there are a number of them, I think it's in single digits, that are pursuing the process of appealing the decision.
Sure.
And these, the ones that I'm aware of, have been here in Albion... And these, the ones that I'm aware of, have been here in Albion for years.
Yep.
You know, and so my question is, how did we get here today at this point? Have the laws changed? Can you help us understand why we're, why we're at this point here in 2019?
Sure.
And I think the tax tribunal will be in 2020?
No, that's going to be December 2nd.
Okay. So we'll be here in 2019. So how do, how are we here in 2019 with some nonprofit organizations that, that were here? So how did we get here?
The laws have not changed at all. So the General Property Tax Act 211-7, I think, 1983, that's when that current law had changed and made a change, if I do that correct. So basically, the 211-7, that, it's very specific on what type of organizations are eligible for tax exemption status. And I think it's a popular misconception that based under, if you get from the IRS a 501(c)(3) that shows that you are nonprofit organization, people automatically assume that you are therefore tax exempt, which is not the case. So state of Michigan law is a lot stricter than the federal laws. And so based on that, it's my job and the city's job to abide by what the state of Michigan says is exempt and what's not tax exempt. And so what I've come across is that there have been in the past some organizations that were exempt that should not have been exempt. And I, not only just in my own accord, I have other resources as well. Ed, who's also on the, the assessor on the contract for the city of Albion, he's been an assessor level four, which is the highest certification you can achieve for almost 30 years. He says no. And I did my own research and I couldn't find anything on some of these things, you know, some of these organizations that were claiming that this is why they should be tax exempt. And so he asked me to call Donna Vanderwees, who, she's an attorney. She's also a level four assessor. She's also equalization director from Skeggen County. And, and she teaches the class on exemptions for the state of Michigan, I guess most importantly. And so with those resources and getting her on the phone, Donna, what do you think about this? And she's absolutely not. Never seen it, it's not, this is why. And so that's where I'm getting my information from. I mean, just from my education and then also outreach, because yeah, I am seeing some of these where it has been approved before and it has, that seemed to be the norm. And then now I'm seeing things that, well, this, it shouldn't have been. And, you know, I'm not going by my own accord. I'm reaching out and I'm looking at other resources as well. And I think particularly the person who teaches the class on exemptions is a pretty good resource.
Councilwoman Clark, and again, we want to keep it general, not mention any specific.
So, so whenever a process has been not followed correctly, is there another process in place to correct it instead of it just being a blanket stop? I'm saying. So do we have something in place to? So in other words, if I violated and.
It wouldn't be your fault.
And didn't know that I was violating.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be your fault.
So is there a tier process of how that happens or is it just like done?
If you're exempt that year, you remain, you remain exempt on the tax roll the entire year. If you're taxable on that year, you're remaining taxable. So example, even if I were to buy a property from the county land bank in June, that's county land bank's exempt, so they're going to remain exempt for, I'm not going to have to pay taxes on that property for the remainder of the year until the next, the following year. Then it's going to go back on the tax roll.
Councilwoman Spicer.
Well, I think Councilwoman Clark asked my question, but she did. But let me just ask, so for that entire year, that person who was in violation or noncompliance and didn't, was unaware, for that entire year, they continue to be. The next year, they are not, they're in noncompliance. Then do they, do they revert?
I put them back on the tax roll.
Put them back on the.
And then so then that property, whether it's personal property or whether it's real property, like a physical, you know, improved property, that building or so forth, then that will go back in the tax roll as taxable.
Okay, so I, I know there must be inefficiencies. So there is no correction of the inefficiencies?
If it's been, Colin, do you have questions?
Well, I don't want to interrupt you. I'm just going to add to what you're saying.
Yeah, sure, chime in.
So, I mean, maybe, maybe this will help council. So just in terms of a process, entities in Michigan are presumed to be taxable and it's incumbent upon the organization to demonstrate that they're exempt from taxation. And so in those years where we discover that an organization no longer meets a criteria, our assessor will put them back on the tax roll. And then there's a procedure that they can follow to seek reinstatement of their exemption. They can go to the board of review.
Yep.
And they'll either get a yea or a nay from the board of review. They're not successful at the board of review. They have the option to go to the Michigan Tax Tribunal and litigate their case there and so on and so forth through the, through the court system. From the tax tribunal, it would go to the Court of Appeals. So, I mean, that's the generalized process, but it's a, it's the tax, the General Property Tax Act is a strictly construed statute, so it's, and it's narrowly tailored. So the idea is you're presumed to be taxable unless you can demonstrate it, you know, a strong compelling reason why you're not.
And it's very, it's very clear. I mean, it's, it's very cut and clear what is and what isn't. And so if there is something that's maybe kind of straddling the fence, I guess you could say, it's not to be presumed, it's not to be interpreted. I'm not to interpret it on my own, you know, or if I do think that this is a good, you know, maybe a good thing, well, then we're going to leave that up to the tax tribunal and let them decide. Because if there's no case study, if I can't find any case law showing that this is or isn't, you know, good or bad, you know, whether I think it's maybe a positive thing even for the community, then I really just have to abide by state law.
So we have the assessor. You make a decision. If the affected party doesn't agree with that, we have a local board of review.
In March.
In March.
Yep.
And those, that has happened. And if the individual, the organization are not satisfied with that, the next is at the state level?
Michigan Tax Tribunal, correct.
Okay. And then there's one more above that or is there something?
Well, if it's, if it's, if it's commercial industrial, they could go, I believe that, let me see, it's, they have so many days. You can go to the Michigan Tax Tribunal within 35 days. Then you can go straight to the tax, for classifications purposes to the state tax commission.
Okay. But at this point, the locally affected entities, they're beyond the city level, beyond.
Correct.
I mean, the, the city of Albion has no leeway. The city of Albion, it's at the state level.
Correct.
Okay. Council?
I'm sorry. I was, I was just going to add as well. I sent out, I printed out a simple list report of, so every, every tax exempt entity, organization, I did a printout in May and obviously I saved Albion, MDOT, things like that I marked off. And so recently I sent out a letter and also an application to have on file for, there was 50 different parcels that were showing as far as nonprofits. So I mailed those out with a request to get them by the end of December. And I'm looking in files, I can't, I just don't see anything on a lot of these organizations, like nothing ever showing that either they got something from the IRS or this is what their bylaws are or what. It's just they're on exempt status. And I guarantee I'm going to get a lot back that are unreturnable and that they're no longer in even existence anymore. But because they've been tax exempt, we don't really pay attention that much because we're not receiving income from them. So we're, you know, but they could be out there and they haven't been doing anything with this building for five years. And we just, because it's on the tax exempt list, it's out of sight, out of mind, you know. But I guarantee, I'm going to, if I'm going to get a lot of kickbacks and return mail because they no longer exist, then I'm going to have to go do a field inspection, see if, you know, see what's going on here or there and kind of get down to the bottom of it, but.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you refresh our memory about what makes a nonprofit tax exempt?
There's, there's specific guidelines and the statute is actually 211-70 in the General Property Tax Act. And a lot of them are good, you know, they're charitable organizations, but you're going to have fraternal groups, you're going to have obviously government agencies, you're going to have assisted care facilities, different medical groups. There's, there's a number of them and they're, but they're very explicit in what's in here. And I don't have a copy for everyone, but it's, they really don't deviate too much. And then if, if there is something that's not in here, then it's, you know, basically states that it's not up to interpretation. If it's not explicitly in this 211-70, they don't qualify.
So can you give us a little bit about what makes a nonprofit status tax exempt, please?
Yep. So let's see, this would be, here's one, federal government, public in education. I know there's, here's fraternal, secret societies. Nonprofit corporation for skilled nursing housing facilities, adult foster care, home for the age, skilled nursing facility, therapeutic services, the disabled people. It's three pages.
Oh, okay.
I mean, there's, there's also like conservation, conservation groups. So, you know, if you're like protecting birds and, you know, things of that nature or hiking trails and.
So I'm going to ask city, our city manager if you can get a copy of that and electronically distribute to every council member?
Yes.
And I've also, I have copies of that application and the letterhead that I sent out to everyone as well, if you guys would like a copy of that as well.
All right. If there's no further questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Next up is an update on Irwin Avenue construction. Mr. Kent Phillips.
Kent Phillips, acting director of Public Services. Was asked to come and update council on where we're at with Irwin Avenue. So I think the best way to start is to try to go through, kind of go through a quick history of what brought us to where we are first. Now go through a list. In the spring of 2017, the city applied for an MEDC grant for Irwin Avenue and that grant was turned down. In April of 2018, MEDC called us back and asked if we still had a need for the $2 million grant. And of course, we said yes and we moved forward with it. In September of 2018, it was approved through MEDC. So then that grant was approved. Survey design, field work and permit processing began in September of 2018. The original plan did not include entering Superior Street. And working with the water department in March, February and March of 2019, it was found out that we had some broken valves in the shut position on Superior Street. It didn't make sense to update the entire water system and leave valves broken in the shut position. So that then involved MDOT in the process. So between the three of them, having MEDC, MDOT and Eagle trying to work together to permit, all three permit the same plan, it took some time and some effort. So then in May of 2019, the lead and copper rules came out, which threw another wrench in our works. Because then we had to go back through each home on Irwin Avenue and find out exactly what type of service was in that house so that we could estimate cost. Because if we found that we had a bunch of lead services all the way through Irwin Avenue, it was going to be hugely expensive and probably out of the scope of what we could do at that time. We did find that there wasn't much of a problem. We only found one, one assumed lead service at this time and a couple of galvanized pipes that we think we're going to have to replace. But those lead and copper rules require us to basically, the system, which is our system, to run the entire line from the water main to 18 inches within the home. So you can see where if we had 20 or 30 properties, that would have added a huge expense that we would have been coming back for. Fortunately, we're in pretty good shape there. So all permits were received in June of 2019. It was determined by the city and Whitman and Associates that in order to get the project started in 2019, we were going to have to split the project into two parts. One part this year and then beginning in the spring of 2020, as soon as the frost laws are off. There was no way to bid this out as one project to be completed from mid-August until the end of this year. It just was not going to get done and we would have not been received by any contractors. So where are we now? Well, let me go back up. In mid-July of 2019, the project, the entire project was awarded to Mead Brothers and work began in mid-August of 2019. The scope for this year is from Woodlawn to Findlay, which is what they're working on now. So now, where are we now? All water main and valves and services are installed. Storm sewer is updated and complete. If you've driven down Irwin Avenue today, you'll see that all the curb and gutter is in and all of the radiuses, which is the, the turn into the side streets are done, which is a huge accomplishment. As you know, the weather really hasn't been our friend. We've had substantial rain. We had approximately seven to eight inches of snow with a very, very hard freeze. Kind of leaves us hoping that this week stays thawed so that we can continue moving forward. The final grade will be taking place this week and be done by Monday, according to the contractors when I talked with them today. They are expecting next Tuesday to put the base coat of asphalt, which is November 26th, the base coat of asphalt on Irwin Avenue. After the base coat is, is, course is down, driveway aprons will then be poured in the first week of December. So they will be coming back in to do cement work. And according to the contractor, that's the best way to go. Is to have that base course down before you bring cement trucks back in through something that they have graded out. So we'll be getting that base course down and then moving on to the cement work that's in people's driveways. The final top coat of asphalt will not be done this year. That was originally scheduled in the plan to have that done. But due to weather concerns, rain, freezing, it has to be the right temperature in order to have a quality product. We think we can, we're, we're fairly sure we can get the base coat down this year and get that all in. They will have us all set for winter. So during the time that the, the aprons are poured, rehab work on the right of way will continue during that time. The other side of not doing the, the surface coat or the top coat of the asphalt is if we, if we went ahead and did that, the weather may not cooperate with us to get it done. And then we'd also have a seam at Woodlawn. One of the worst things you can do with asphalt is have a seam. So when we begin in the spring, at the conclusion of all of the work on the east end of Irwin Avenue, one coat, one top coat will be put on through the entire project and we will have no seam at Woodlawn, which will make a big difference in its longevity. So as soon as the frost laws are off in the spring of 2020, work on the east end of Irwin Avenue will begin and the entire project is to be completed July 1st of 2020. So what happens if the rain and snow and temps and everything don't agree with us and we don't get to a base coat or subcoat? And the worst case scenario is that we use millings to fill driveways if it's to the point where we can't pour cement and, and level as much as we can out with road millings that we have available to us. That'll create a fairly decent roadway for the winter. And then again, we would be looking at beginning construction as soon as possible in the spring.
Questions by coun, I'm sorry?
No, no.
Questions by council?
Where is Woodlawn? How far towards Homer will be done?
Woodlawn is one of the boulevards. I'm trying to think if it's, it would be a block up from Dalrymple. So if you turn right on Dalrymple heading toward, you got about a block before you hit construction and Woodlawn then goes off to the left there.
So past the cemetery going towards Homer, how much of that will be left undone?
No, the cemetery, that part of, or part of Albion Homer Road, that's all been done.
Oh.
Yeah. So we're just meeting up with that, with the construction that we're doing. We will be doing the intersection of Findlay and that's what's going on right now. Yeah, so we're just meeting up with that, with the construction that we're doing, we will be doing the intersection of Findlay, and that's what's going on right now.
Sure. Any other questions by council? Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Next item, I've just been advised that the appropriate thing to do is to move that to the consent calendar. And so I, which is approval of city hall closure on Friday, will be moved to the consent calendar, and that would be new item. See? Okay, so I may have a motion to move that to the consent calendar.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay, it's approved, we move that to the consent calendar. Okay, next item is the Sprout Box Program with the Albion Food Hub, Ms. Laura Overhall.
I'm Laura Overhall with the Albion Food Hub and Albion Farmers Market, and I'm kinda here with both of them, actually. So the winter farmers market last year did not go well. We've had a winter farmers market the past two years, we were required to by a grant. It's very difficult to grow things in the wintertime in this area, so, but the farmers market did so well. As we closed out our season, we have people that are missing the farmers market. So there is a organization in Battle Creek called Sprout, so this, I've got some flyers on the Sprout boxes. So it is an online farmers market, so you can go online, it's a subscription-based box. You spend fifteen dollars a week, or bi-weekly, and you can add more to that if you'd like to. And you can pick out the different things that you want in your box, just like you were shopping at a farmers market. If you want eggs, if you want produce, if you want chocolate, or baked goods, or whatever, and you can put it into your box, and then it's delivered. We are very close to the fifteen that we need for them to start making deliveries to Albion. So we're very close to that number right now, so. Right now, we have, we need fifteen, we deliver them to Albion, and you can just stop by and pick them up, they're already paid for. If you forget to pick out the stuff and shop, they fill your box for you. So it's kind of fun, you know, you get to, you get your box, you open it up, it's like Christmas morning, you don't know what's in there, you just know it's local. You're supporting local farmers and local business. I had some really great chocolate in my boxes last week, so it's all produced here in Michigan, and it's made by a really great organization that helps kids in Battle Creek. So I thought that was a lot of fun, to be able to get those things in the box, and then I'm trying to think what else there was I needed to say, oh, you can use your bridge card, or Double Up Food Bucks is a program that we use at our farmers market that everybody has become familiar with. You can use that to purchase the box. So if you go above your amount, then you just, you're charged extra. But at the same time, it's fifteen dollars flat rate, and you can pick and choose what goes in your box. If you forget to pick up your box, then it can be donated, so, unless you make arrangements or whatever. So it'll be donated to a local organization, so it still helps people locally. You can pause the box if you go on vacation, so if you, I'm gonna be gone for a couple weeks, I won't be able to pick it up. I'm just, so you can pause it, and then resume it when you come back. And they're working with local farmers, I'm helping make connections with some of our local farmers, so that they can sell their produce to the rest of lower Michigan as well. So if you have any questions, you can go to joinsproutbox.com and help us out.
I understand, particularly recommended for college students.
College students is a great option.
Councilman Williamson.
I was gonna mention, I signed up for this as soon as we had it, I know the executive director for Sprout Urban Farms in Battle Creek is named Shane Meandrews. We spent fifteen dollars on our first box last week, we got cabbage, a huge thing of carrots, red-skinned potatoes, a couple of portions of salad greens, and then a couple other small things, including French bread from Dark Horse, and it was only fifteen bucks. So there's extreme value in doing this, it's convenient, even Laura went and picked it up for us all this first time around, because there wasn't enough people. But the more people doing this, the better. If you're familiar with the CSA share in the summers through different farms, this is similar, but it's customizable, so you only get what you want. There's not just a bunch of stuff you're not gonna eat in there, so.
Don't, don't open the box and wonder what it is, if you, you can open it.
So it's, it's a really good program, people should go and sign up for that.
Councilman Smith.
Burby, you had said, sign up for the program, how long does the program last once you sign up?
I don't believe there's an end date, until you cancel.
It's cancelable at any time.
There's no contract.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item, a public hearing, which we don't have tonight, so we'll move into public comments. Individuals wishing to make public comments on any agenda items, please come forward, state your name, address, and you have three minutes for your comments, and stick to the, the topic, no personal attacks or anything else, and everybody respect the speakers.
My name is Lonnie Burrow, I'm the president of Double Vision Center and the CEO. What I'm doing now, we, we did a fundraiser inside our building, we was one of the people that was affected with this building getting taken off our tax status, because we wasn't inside the facility. So what we did, we doing a fundraiser, we raised so far, with our fundraiser, thirty-five hundred. Our goal is to reach seventy-five thousand, the state gonna match us a hundred thousand. That's gonna be, that's gonna help us with the renovation of our building. I think that's gonna pretty much do majority of what we need to get done at our facility. Of course, we're gonna need more to, to get more cosmetic done to our facility, our building. So that's what we working on now, so we're happy about what we made so far in our, in our fundraiser. We're saying that, I also have other investors that waiting for Double Vision to get open, because they wanna come out, and we strongly consider putting the boys and the girls inside our facility. So that's another thing that we think that Albion need, and we want everybody to come out and support it. We can continue to do fundraisers, and I want everybody that belong to an organization, fundraiser, anything, to help with this seventy-five thousand dollars we trying to do. We're saying that, we gonna also turn it back to a skating rink. I know the college kids and the Albion High School kids would love to see another skating rink, we talked to them, we did a survey. They loving it, they want that to happen, so we gonna make that happen. So investors that, we got about three, four people that waiting for Double Vision. So so far, they waiting for us to make this move with our renovation party and the fundraiser. So when we get done with that, I really want Albion input, I want Albion to get involved. Because like I said before, it's gonna be nice for the city of Albion, it's gonna be nice for the downtown areas. Like I said, with the support of the city and the college, I think that we can make a success, so thank y'all.
Any questions?
So I know that in that building, there's some areas in the back that you guys don't utilize much. And I was talking to Nicole DePonte, and she was talking about doing some other things in this area, such as helping people that were homeless and things like that. So that's somebody that you might wanna reach out to.
Okay.
Because there's some, some funding available for that. And, you know, it's not something that you have to necessarily clothe them or anything like that, it's just giving, providing them a place to stay for the night, and at a certain port, portion of the morning.
Well, once we get the boys and the girls, I'm gonna let them make that decision, because the space in, inside the back building, that's what they gonna use it for, for the gym. So other than that, we, we plan on expanding it, I don't know if they wanna go up, that's what we was talking about once before. But it's gonna be a nice project once we start it, so I think it's gonna be real nice.
Okay, so make sure you reach out to her, because.
Okay. Give it, give it information.
Okay, I will.
Thank you. Anybody?
It's not really on the agenda, so we're, we're gonna move on, if anybody have any other public comments this evening. Any other public comments on the agenda items? Okay, seeing none, move to the consent calendar, we have three items on the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are voted on as one unit, first is approval of regular session minutes for November fourth, two thousand nineteen. Let's see, city hall closure on the thirteenth of December, so we have two items. So may I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Support? Okay, all those in favor of approving this consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, no opposed, okay, consent calendar is approved. Next item is, items for individual discussion, first is the election of mayor pro tem. Councilman Williamson.
I move that we select Councilwoman Clark to be mayor pro tem.
Okay, it's been moved to second, is there discussion? Councilman Spicer.
I just have a question, I, Colin, is there a criteria for a term for a councilperson to be on before they are mayor pro tem?
No.
Not that I'm aware, but I will happily check our charter right now.
Okay, I just wondered.
And while Colin, our city attorney, is checking that, I, under discussion, I have do one, you have one question, it's a pointy question. Councilmember Clark, are you willing to serve in that capacity? If the consensus of your colleagues are that you should be the mayor pro tem? This is where you say yes?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
So the, the charter provides that the, basically just have to have the same qualifications that, to be a councilperson. And so any, any councilperson that meets the qualifications to hold a council up is gonna be pro tem.
Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, and the motion before us is to elect Councilwoman Clark as mayor pro tem.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Spicer.
Yes.
Williamson.
Yes.
Have Clark vote or herself?
No, I don't.
And then Mayor Atchison.
Yes. Congratulations, Councilwoman Clark. Okay, applause is appropriate. Next item is a discussion on section four point three Bravo of the city charter related to eligibility for city boards and commissions. And I would ask our city manager to lead that discussion, or at least start with the discussion. There is a, an explanatory memo in the packet, but, Mr. McCleary, would you?
Your honor, section four point three B of the city charter, or I should say, section four point three of the city charter addresses persons that are ineligible for city office or employment. Subsection A talks about a person who is in default to the city shall not be eligible to hold any city office. And subsection B states that a person who holds or has held an elective office shall not be eligible for appointment to an office or for employment for which compensation is paid by the city until one year has elapsed following the term for which the person was elected or appointed. Both of these subsections have created some confusion for the mayor and council in making appointments. The charter does not define what default to the city means. And subsection B, there have been instances where the council has appointed members of the council to boards and commissions, or there have been members of boards and commissions who have then run for elective office. And so we're, we're hoping to get further clarification on what both of those sections mean. And if there, if it is possible for the council to adopt an ordinance that further clarifies how those two sections are to be implemented, we, it may be appropriate for the city attorney to draft an ordinance that further clarifies those two provisions for councils' consideration. With that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
At some point, I definitely wanna hear from the city attorney, but I'll invite members of council, if you wish to make comments or ask questions, now would be a good time. Councilman Williamson.
I think it's important to take the recommended action to look at an ordinance, just to clarify and give us, I, I know it's been a hindrance in, for, for the mayor in appointing people to positions, because default sounds so, oh, they missed one payment, or they're not on a payment plan, or there's not, there's things that happen, and it seems like one in every one situation, there's an issue, whether that be a water bill, a tax bill, a parking ticket, a mysterious something popped up. So I'm hoping that we can get some clarification that the council can agree on that way moving forward. People are not just automatically disqualified for that surprise parking ticket they didn't know they had, and they, that they're able to rectify that.
Any other comments or questions by council? I'm, my understanding is, and I'm not a lawyer, default goes beyond simply being, having an outstanding debt, meaning my water bill or my property taxes is coming due. The city issues those things, and you have a, a certain amount of time to pay them, pay the city on that. And then sometimes, for a variety of reasons, people miss a due date, and so that it becomes overdue. I, to me, the term default has always meant, and this is just my understanding of it, it's something more than, I had a water bill that was due on the first of the month, and I overlooked it, I was out of town, whatever, and so I pay it on the seventeenth of the month. Was it overdue? Yes, may well incur an additional fine, but there was no intent on mine or anybody else's part not to pay that bill. And in my world, default is a little bit beyond that. So I'm interested, and I absolutely would like the city attorney, if the rest of council agrees, to draft something. I'm hoping that it comes back with language, something along the lines of default, and with a definition of times, perhaps that's, you know, a certain amount of time, past the point, it's overdue. Maybe, maybe there's a requirement for the city to issue written notification that this individual is in default. But I'll leave that up if, general consensus appears, but we'll hear from the city attorney now.
So I mean, what I can offer to the council, at least for purposes of tonight, is, this question has actually come up before, and I've actually given a legal opinion in the past to council. Our charter doesn't define default, but there are various cases, I think there might be an AG opinion or two, that, that basically say, you know, for example, in the context of a tax bill, you're not in default until you're past due. Once you're past due, you're in default. The case law makes it very clear that being on a payment plan does not cure the default, you are, if you're past due, you are in default. Our charter does provide, as it relates to city offices, which would be either elected or appointed city offices, that you have thirty days from the notice, written notice from the clerk to cure the default, or the, with the exception of if you're, if you're testing the legality of the debt, for example, if you had property taxes and you were taking it, you were, you were contesting your property tax assessment, that would be an exception. But you have thirty days to cure the default, or your office becomes vacant. As it relates to an ordinance, I'm, I'm happy to explore that, I would say, though, I don't think we can manipulate the definition of default beyond what the state and the appellate courts have, have set forth for us. I think we can incorporate that to the extent that it doesn't conflict with, with what's already in our charter, we can incorporate that into an ordinance. But the, the state's been pretty clear on, on, unfortunate, what, what default is. I mean, I, I tend to agree with the mayor, you know, and sometimes you just forget about a water bill, but unfortunately, they have drawn that line. But they do, but our charter does give a window of time to, to cure the default before action is taken. So.
So because there has been confusion, and it's affected outcomes of elections and other things, if there's no objection from council, I would ask and task our city manager to work with our city attorney, and ask the city attorney to draft something for us to consider passing as an ordinance. Is there any disagreement with that? Okay, so the general consensus of council is for the city manager to work with you, sir, and for you to draft an ordinance for our concern, our consideration. Okay, and. And, so, there are certain provisions within state statutes that specifically prohibit, in some cases, I believe, city officials sitting on certain boards, but there also are some that specifically spell out, it has, it provides guidance on city officials sitting on, on city boards and commissions. If we could ask the two of you to do the same thing, work together, if we could get something in writing, and I don't know if that's an ordinance or something, that clarifies board-by-board commission, whether there are any limitations or restrictions, that would be very helpful.
Sure. I'm hap, I'm happy to do that as well. I mean, I can tell you, most, if not all, of the boards and commissions that we have contain statutory language that allow for a governing body service on those boards. There are minor exceptions, but I'm happy to do that as well.
Okay. Any other comments or questions by council? Okay. Next item is the, I believe it's the city hall closure on thirteenth December.
I'm sure it should be the city.
Vacancy?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, the next item is the EDC Board determination of the vacancy and the board that Ms. Brown was assigned to and was appointed by my predecessor while she was serving on council. And so, after having discussed it at Great Lake with the city attorney and the city manager, what the council needs to do is take action to decide whether or not we're going to vote to remove Ms. Brown from the city, or the EDC Board seat for cause. So, the motion would be, I'm asking for somebody to make a motion that the city council vote to remove Sonia Brown from the EDC Board of Directors for cause on the basis of having violated the city charter. May I have a motion?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Set.
Okay. Discussion. Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. I guess I just want to know how the, I know that the appointment for Sonia Brown was made last November, and it was for a six-year term, which would clearly be outside of the scope of her council position because her council position would have been up next year. So, I think the intent at that time was to not have her appointed to that position as a council member, but just as a citizen, a resident of the community. So, I, I don't understand how we can, because her precinct clearly voted to remove her for a violation there, I don't see how that in terms of transfers over to her EDC position. I think they're two different things. Doesn't the EDC have bylaws of themselves where they govern actions or non-action as a member of their board that may be cause for removal? I guess I'm asking Attorney Harkness for clarification.
So, I'll respond, and then if, if we need to have the city attorney address a legal issue, we certainly will do that. So, the EDC Board determined that she was appointed as a councilperson, and you can't, I agree that you cannot be a councilperson part of the time and a private citizen the rest of the time. If you're an elected official, you're an elected official, and what you do is in that capacity. And so, on the basis of that, they went back and determined, and are convinced, and their lawyer was convinced, their legal attorney was convinced, that she was appointed as a councilperson and concluded that since she was no longer a council, on council-elected official, she therefore was no longer on the EDC Board. And that's their position. It made sense to me, discussed it with our city attorney, and our city attorney has, I'm going to state it, and then I'm going to ask you if I got it right. Our city attorney has, has clarified that the city council, the mayor appoints, the council confirms, and the process for removing somebody from a board is essentially reverse of that. In the end, the council would need to vote if the individual is to be removed. And I'll let, I'll allow, or not allow, but I'll ask the city attorney to discuss that, explain that, what the basis is.
So, what you just said is true. I think the caveat to that, though, is, in addition to a motion and a vote by council to remove, there would also have to be cause shown as, as required by the, by the EDC state statute, which is subsection six of that statute, says a director may be removed from office for cause by a majority vote of the governing body. The statute doesn't define what cause is. I can tell you that the EDC bylaws do reference removal for, and I quote, inefficiency, malfeasance, misconduct, or neglect of duty. I don't think that that's an ex, I don't think those are exclusive definitions, I think those are some examples. I think something that I can offer to council is that cause could also include anything that would call into conduct the director's ability to perform their duties as a, as an EDC director, anything that's inconsistent with federal, state, or local law. Those are all examples of, of what could constitute cause. It's a fairly broad term. And so, hopefully, that answers any questions.
Just a little clarification.
Councilwoman, I'm going to let Councilwoman Clark speak, and then I'll come back to you.
Okay. So, so, because it's a broad question for cause, I think, as a representative, precinct one and everybody else, if it's, if it's broad, then how is there a decision being made?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, in other words, if, if there's a, if the EDC is wanting her to remove because of cause, but it's a broad, it's not a clear cluck, clear understanding of what?
So, the EDC isn't asking for removal, the council is, is deciding whether or not to remove. And I'm just, I'm just offering that their bylaws provide some basis for what cause could be. And ultimately, the council will have to decide what constitutes sufficient cause.
And so, my understanding is, the definition is broad, which means that it's not narrowly defined, it is broad in what can be included, and there was a term in there for misconduct.
Correct.
Okay. And so, the motion is to remove for cause for misconduct, and the misconduct is violating our city charter. Councilwoman Spicer.
But that would be a council violation, that wouldn't be an EDC violation. I think EDC has, you mentioned malfeasance, in her position as an EDC director, there was no malfeasance, malfeasance, and I can't remember the other terms you mentioned, Attorney Harkness. But in that position, that was not what happened. We're, as a result of her council position, there was an action taken as a result of what her precinct member citizens decided was inappropriate. But I don't, I don't see how it parlay's over to her EDC position. And I understand that the EDC is asking for this, but it's, it's a council decision whether or not we remove her.
Councilman Williamson.
So, just to clarify, so, Ms. Brown was appointed as a council member to, council representative to the EDC. So, during her tenure as a council member, representing council as an EDC Board of Director, there was a breaking of the charter, a violation of the charter, a few, in fact. So, while there might be an effort to separate councilperson versus EDC director, her council seat was directly tied to being an EDC director, in which case, she violated the charter. And you don't have to be just a council member to violate the charter, you could be a citizen who violates the charter as well. And so, the motion being made tonight is to remove Ms. Brown from EDC council based on her very public violation of the city charter in acting as EDC director on behalf of city council as a city council representative. And so, I just want to make sure that we don't try to, like, you know, really split hairs here, and don't lose your councilperson membership when you're appointed to the EDC as a council member and then sit at the table. So, I hope that helps to clarify this just a little bit more. And I do support removing Ms. Brown from, from the EDC Board.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. How could she be appointed as a councilperson when the term was for six years and you being a councilperson is only for four?
So, in explanation of that, she was a council member when she was appointed. I'm the mayor today, tomorrow, next week, I'm the mayor when I sit on any board. It is a little bit different because it is called out that the mayor sits or is on a board because of position. So, that is, is my understanding, that's my belief, that any one of us, as an elected official, if we are appointed to a board, we can't, we don't stop being that elected official. And so, the basis for the removal is for misconduct, and misconduct is the violation of the city charter, which would apply to any city official, which would apply to any citizen. And I believe, Ms. Clark, you had a question or had a comment?
Okay. So, basically, it's because of violation. It's why it's been put up as a vote. My question was similar to hers. I was just wondering if there, but if that's the reason why it's being put up to vote, that's clear cut. But I was going to ask the same thing she was asking, was that put in writing that she was put into office as an elective person from council? Was that clearly in writing? When the minutes went four, is that what it said? Like, we take minutes here? So, when the minutes were taken, was she put in office as a councilperson or as just a citizen? Was that in writing? That's what I'm asking.
I know that the vote was taken as she was appointed as, was appointed as Councilwoman Brown. At that meeting, there were four appointments. The other two appointments, those individuals were appointed by name, no title. Ms. Rufus, City Manager Rufus, was appointed City Manager Rufus. Councilwoman Brown was appointed Councilwoman Brown. Ms. Spicer.
Thank you. I was here when that appointment was made, and it wasn't just a council appointment. Sonia Brown went through the process as any other individual who applied for a position. She submitted an application, and I believe we do background checks for people who are on boards and commission, and she went through that as well. As a council appointment, we don't, we don't do background checks, we're automatically appointed. So, I think that there's a distinction there in her appointment. And each one of us has a different read and a different opinion on it. But I'd like, for me, the legal opinion is what's going to, what matters to me at this point. Thank you.
So, City Attorney Harkness, do you have anything else?
Well, I, I, what I would just offer is, I think the council's talking about two different things here. There is, there is the question of whether or not the appointment was made in an official or in an individual capacity. The EDC has rendered their own opinion on that. But that's not what I think the council is deciding tonight. I mean, what the, what I, what the, at least the motion that was made was for removal from cause. That's a separate thing from whether or not your term expires at the end of your term of service as a councilperson. So, I think the council should be careful not to confuse those two things because they are two separate, two separate issues. Quite frankly, I, I don't know that the council realistically decides. I, I think the EDC has made their own decision. In terms of, in terms of whether or not the council wants to end a director's tenure on, on the EDC, the statute is very clear on, on what needs to happen to do that. And so, realistically, what the council is considering is, is there cause or is there not, and do we want to remove someone or do we not? And, and so, I don't, I don't know that the, the, well, at least from what I heard from the motion, it didn't, it didn't include the, the issue of appointment in an official or an individual capacity. I just want to clarify, I think those are two separate things.
Okay. So, the motion before us is to remove Sonia Brown from the EDC Board of Directors for cause, the cause being misconduct and violation of the city charter. Are there any other comments or questions or discussion based on that motion? Seeing none, Ms. Snyder, please read the roll. A vote in the affirmative, aye or yes, is a vote to remove. Vote no is to not remove for cause.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Lawler?
No.
Spicer?
No.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
No.
And Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. So, what was the final tally?
I'm four-three.
Okay.
So, what do we need?
Okay. So, the vote is four in favor of removal for cause, three not to remove. So, Ms. Brown is removed for cause.
No, but the statute says a majority vote.
Okay. Next item is the vote to approve closing city hall on thirteenth December at 1:00 PM for the employees' Christmas party. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Reed, you did that in the second tally.
I beg your pardon? Oh, we did, I apologize, thank you. Okay. So, employees' Christmas party is approved, closing city hall for that. Next item is the discussion, I'm sorry, request approval, second reading and adoption of ordinance 2019-09 and ordinance to amend Chapter One, Section 128 Ethics. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Okay. City Attorney, would you please summarize this for us?
So, this was two minor changes to the ethics ordinance. If you recall, we had, the council discussed modifying the timeframes for notifying, scheduling the public hearing and actually holding the public hearing, and so, that language has been modified to read, "Said public hearing shall be scheduled within thirty days of the date the three councilpersons notify the mayor, the mayor pro tem, the city attorney, and the city manager in writing of their call for a public hearing. Said public hearing shall be held not more than sixty days from the date of the notice provided to the mayor, the mayor pro tem, the city attorney, and the city manager." So, hearing gets scheduled within thirty days of the notice, there is a sixty-day window after the notice to actually hold the hearing. The other modification that was made was in subsection twelve. There was a typo there between, I want to say it was subsection twelve and subsection thirteen. One of them said a majority vote, the other said a supermajority. We corrected it so that both sections reflect a majority vote. And those are the only changes that have been made.
Okay. All right. Any questions by council? Ms. Snyder, would you read the roll, please?
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Okay. Next item is request approval of 2020 council meeting dates. And, I beg your pardon?
You missed the collection bin.
Collection.
Missed the what?
Collection bins.
Oh, you're right. My apologies. Thank you. Okay. Request approval, second reading and adoption of ordinance 2019-10 and ordinance to amend Chapter 22 to add Article Six, Sections 22, 220 through 22, 227, collection bins. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Okay. Discussion. Any discussion? Well, I'll ask the city attorney to summarize that.
Sure. So, if the council recalls, we, we did the first reading of this last time. The, there's been an ongoing issue with the collection bins in town, most of which is they get to the point where they're overflowing, there's materials stored around them, it becomes unsightly, and the companies haven't been taking care of them. This imposes some regulations on where they can be placed, how often they have to be emptied, general upkeep, making sure that they're not becoming rusty, things of that nature. In speaking with John Tracy, the, the director of planning, we put, put it so that the collection bins are allowed in the M1 light industrial, M2 heavy industrial, and C commercial district, that's in line with the zoning amendments that were recently made. That way, we're not ending up with those in residential area. That way, we're not ending up with those, um, in residential areas and they also have to be spaced at least a thousand, um, feet apart. Uh, we put our permitting process in place. Collection permits are valid for a year. Um, we built in a provision such that there's a window of time, uh, following the enactment of the ordinance for them to get into compliance. Uh, we were very careful, uh, I think I mentioned this last time, there was a case, a federal case in twenty fifteen where, um, a municipality tried to ban the, the bins outright. We didn't do that because the court said that's a violation of, of the First Amendment. Um, but, uh, this ordinance was modeled after an ordinance done by the city of Lansing, which was post that case. So, we, um, should be in compliance with federal law.
Questions by council? Seeing none, Ms. Snyder, would you read the roll?
Um, councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the next item is approval of twenty twenty council meeting dates. Uh, may I have a motion to approve what's in the packet, the dates, which again continue to be the first and third Mondays of the month?
Still moved.
Is there support?
Support.
Where is that at?
Uh, it's in here somewhere, 'cause I saw it.
Right behind the ordinance.
Okay.
So...
Right here.
Five, six, five, six, seven. There it is.
So, we have the dates. So, is there any discussion? I have something, but I'll wait and see if council, other members of council have something. Okay. I know we need to have this published and approved. I think it's by the first council meeting after the new year. Is that correct, City Attorney? That's the, the deadline for having it published?
I will tell you right now.
Who's that? I didn't see a second.
I believe, Council, Councilwoman Clark. So, it's either by the end of this calendar year or the, early into the, the start of the new calendar year. Uh, so that... Okay. Uh, I'm gonna ask, go ahead and take action on this. It's done. Uh, those are the dates. I'm gonna ask that we consider, uh, not tonight, but in the future. And we'll have some time, and I'm gonna ask our, our mayor pro tem to, uh, work with the city clerk and the city manager. But if council agrees, I would like to see if we can move the council meetings on the first Mondays, now whether that's the first and third Mondays and we find a different date, uh, but to move our council meetings from the first Mondays of the month, uh, because blues at the bone is a big part of this community. Music is a big part of this community, and I think it's incumbent upon us to support that. Uh, and so, I'm, I'm gonna ask my colleagues, we'll, we'll have that discussion later on. I, I think the most expedient thing would be to go ahead and, and approve this if there's no real disagreement with anything, and then we can take that up again, uh, in the not-too-distant future and see if we can work out a different date, at least for the first meetings of the month. So, and we'll have to discuss with the city attorney to see if he can support that, et cetera. City Attorney Harkness?
To answer your question, and I was looking at the charter, it's actually the Open Meetings Act. Um, it's, uh, the, the schedule has to be set, uh, by the first meeting of the year or, or the calendar or fiscal year.
Okay. In our case, they're the same.
Yes.
Okay. So, just discussion, we'll go ahead and hopefully have a vote on this. It'll get passed, it'll be set. But then I would like council to take a look at moving our, at least our first Monday meetings to an alternative date, work out whatever conflict, so that, uh, we're not asking our, our citizens that would like to take advantage of both, uh, make that easy on them. Also permit city council members to support the community and, uh, attend at least sometimes the events, uh, blues at the bone. So, the motion before us is to approve the schedule as contained within the packet. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Councilwoman Clark?
So, I know you're bringing that up as a future item, and I know we voted on it before, and, um, maybe an alternative, so it don't, so it's not, so it's voted no again. Mayor, maybe we can look at not necessarily every first Monday, but, uh, alternate every first Monday.
Which we certainly can discuss and come up something that's the general consensus. Uh, just something I wanted to let you know that, uh, I intend that we bring that back up and look at that. I think that would support the community, but we can do that at a later time. So, if there's no other comments or questions, Ms. Snyder, please read the roll.
Councilmember Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is to discuss the establishment of a permanent parks, trails and recreation commission, which would be establishing another city commission slant board. We have the, a variety of those for different functions. May I have a motion? Or, no, not a motion, this is just discussion. Uh, there's a brief, one-page sheet in the packet as to why I think it's a good idea. Uh, I'll summarize that in saying that, uh, the people that would end up sitting on that board would not be, uh, it would put the, the community having representatives on the board to have more of an involvement and investment and a say over long-term parks and recreation. I think it sends a good message, and it is a good thing for our community to take our parks, trails and recreation program very seriously. Uh, we have a planning commission, we have a downtown development authority, we have an economic development corporation and so on and so forth. Parks and recreation are very important. I mean, every single member on this council, this council and previous councils and countless members of the community have made it very clear to me that recreation in our parks are of paramount importance. And so, that's why I'm asking my council to consider this. If, if there, well, I'd like to have some further discussion, and if we reach general consensus that the council thinks this is something that we, we should do, the next step would be to task our city attorney to draft an ordinance. Uh, so, other members of council wish to address it? Councilman Smith?
Um, in our, uh, budget plan that we've gone through, uh, there, and of course, uh, last year, there was a, um, a vote for, uh, millage for recreation. So, with those dollars being available, what type of control or such would this commission have over the spending of those dollars?
My mind is that those specific details, very good questions, would be captured in an ordinance, and council would discuss that, and council would decide. And we would vote and shape that ordinance as to what the authority, scope of authority, uh, how many members, those sorts of things, if we go forward with an ordinance. City Attorney?
So, so what I can offer to you, Councilman, um, Smith, is that, uh, what other municipalities have done by way of example, East Lansing has a Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Um, they were, they basically, for, uh, for example, uh, the Recreation Department would prepare a budget, they would present it to the commission, the commission would review it and, and ultimately make recommendations to the council. And so, ultimately, the budget stays with the council, but given that the commission may be more in tune to the ins and outs of recreation, they're in a, probably in a better position to make recommendations to the council. That's usually, some, something along those lines is what a lot of municipalities do.
Councilwoman Lawler, and then I'll come back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, why do we have a recreation director if we're getting a recreation, um, trails and parks commission? Um, I would think that the, um, director would be able, those would be his, his or her duties. So, I'm not understanding why we need this commission.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Um, I think, so this is similar to the way the EDC operates with the city. Uh, they submit a budget, they submit a budget plan, they, um, and the EDC board approves it and then gets submitted to the council. We, again, I'll walk that process on Saturday. Um, I have, uh, been increasingly more concerned with our recreation programming and I'm, and of course, our par, our trails and parkways are, are, uh, parks, trailway, parks and trailways are, uh, gaining a lot of attention as, um, as we grow. Um, so, I'm hoping that having a commission established will provide some direction, uh, for, you know, future visioning of what our recreation and parks programming looks like. And I believe it would be helpful to the city manager and to the council. We can't be on all things at the ground level, but this commission would be there to help see how we can improve our programming, monitor, uh, the budget more closely than I think all of us can on an individual daily basis, um, and help provide some unique opportunities for collaboration in the community. And I, and I want to say that not just for this particular piece, but for the next two agenda items. That is, that is, uh, something I think flows, uh, to the next two committees that are, uh, being proposed, being established. So, in general, I'm supportive of including more people in the process of governing and using our recreation and parks and trailway dollars to make sure that we're getting the max benefit out of it. Um, I think that is, I think that's one of the most important things you can do on council.
Okay. Councilwoman Reed?
Albion had a Parks Department, uh, committee, uh, back when Mrs. Schulteis was here, and it was about six people on it that worked, but we did not, we just worked with parks and, and, and trails and stuff. We did not actually tell the Recreation Department what they had to do. Uh, we included them. They were included in, you know, but, but was not told. Their funds did not come to us to do things with, stayed with them.
Councilwoman Spicer?
Thank you. I, I think that if we commissioned and we started initially out as an, um, advisory commission, and then we could, if we saw, um, a need, a deeper need, we can move forward from that. So, my suggestion is that we start with an advisory committee for these three, um, commissions.
Okay. So, parks recreation, or parks, trails and recreation. Uh, any other comments? Okay. So, I, I hear one council member that doesn't see a need to, to do anything. Do I, did I understand that correctly?
No, I was just asking what, what was, why do we even need a, a, a commission when we have the Recreation Department, um, Director doing the majority? And it seems to me that will be their job, but I do like the idea of having, um, an advisory committee. That's, yeah, I, I like that.
Okay. So, we do, we did have a, an advisory committee under Councilwoman Reed. Uh, I, can we, is it acceptable to the council, to the majority of council, that we have, uh, the city attorney and again, the city manager work with the city attorney to at least give us a draft, uh, ordinance that we can consider? Uh, anybody have strong objections to that? Okay. So, general consensus is to have the city manager work with the city attorney and prepare draft ordinance. Next item is the establishment of a permanent arts and, uh, culture commission. We're beginning to see, uh, traction in the community for having more public art. I think that's a marvelous thing. I think that's something to, uh, to be nurtured and facilitated so that we have more of it. Uh, there's a couple of other projects that I've heard of. I would like to have Albion, uh, be a destination to bring people in to see the marvelous works of art, and that covers all, all disciplines, all genres. Uh, I think it's really important that as a city, we be all-inclusive of the entire population, all genders, all age groups, all ethnicities. Uh, and we, I think it sends a very powerful message that we take it serious. We take our music, we take our dance, we take, uh, visual and performing arts serious at Albion, and we want that to, to grow. Uh, and one way to do that is to establish a permanent committee, a commission. Uh, again, the specific scope, authority, responsibilities, that's something that will need to be, to be codified if we go forward, and council certainly will be in the midst of shaping that and voting yes or no if we choose to implement it. Uh, I think what we, what would not be advantageous to the city is if we, if we have this growth and this upsurge in art, it's sort of a, and it happens as it happens. And the best example that I can give is I have a, a carriage house that overlooks lots of public space. You can stand outside on the steps of city hall and see it. Uh, it's my private property. Uh, I might choose to put up a piece of art that I think is beautiful, uh, but the vast majority of people might find it offensive. Uh, so, I don't know the nuances of that. That's private property. We can't control what individuals do at their private property to a large extent, but there's also public spaces. There's re, you know, retaining walls and other in public buildings and public spaces. And I think if we go forward with art, uh, in sort of a, a thought-out process so that it all flows, it's not all the same. It's, it's inclusive, but that it's complimentary. Uh, and that's a role that I think an arts and culture commission could serve, and if we structure that board properly, there could be an aspect of fundraising and raising funds for the arts to facilitate and cause that to grow. Other council members' comments? Councilwoman Williamson?
Uh, I come at this from a place of, uh, capacity building for the community. So, uh, when it comes to public art, uh, or artists in general, I think it'd be great if the city had something in place where we could actually, um, solicit and capacity build for public spaces and making, and beautifying our town in form of art, all, all forms of it. Um, if you think about local artists or young artists that probably don't have a lot of money, um, but could potentially receive a grant, it's a place that they could get that money and then, and then provide this beautiful new art that would end up in our community either, uh, downtown or anywhere else. Um, so, I generally, while I generally oppose the regulation of art, um, I do, um, I do, uh, agree in making, um, public art more accessible and bringing more of it to our community and, you know, making Albion more beautiful. So, um, I'll, I'll go on with some of the regulations as we go, but, um, I generally see this as a capacity building for the community.
Councilman Smith?
Um, well, I see Councilman Williamson's, um, points there. The only thing I would like to keep some type of control on, uh, is that, uh, I'm sure we've all been to many cities where they, uh, just go wild with their murals and they end up with a city that looks like a comic book. This, we have a beautiful historic city. Uh, red brick is historic. Uh, shocking blue paint is not. So, I, I would like to be sure that we keep a rein on what we consider. I mean, art is art for art's sake, of course, but, um, I would like to keep an eye on where it goes if we can.
So, I put it on here, uh, and yes, the aspect of continuity and having something that's gonna be, uh, complimentary is part of it, but more importantly, I, I think I'm in line with you, Councilman Williamson. I want to see art flourish. I want to have more public art. Uh, and I think if we structure that board specifically to include expertise in fundraising. Parks and recreation, Councilwoman Reed, you've done a phenomenal job in raising funds for parks. Uh, and I think if we can replicate that as part of the Parks Commission, uh, and move forward with that, we can do great things with our parks, trailways, et cetera. Councilman Williamson?
Um, I'd also like to add, if we're gonna be looking at an exploratory, um, like, uh, like an ordinance that kind of codifies this, I'd love there to be a requirement for there to be artists, uh, people who teach art, uh, to have seats on this commission because I think it's really important, and if you talk to any of our leaders in the arts in the community, um, they, they need to have a voice in how that works, and you make sure that we have those folks included. Um, and, and then I also want to point to Jackson, one of our neighboring communities that are really fun, uh, thing where they took a lot of, uh, some abandoned buildings, they're downtown area, some not so abandoned. They did something called the Bright Walls Project, um, and they had artists from all over come in and make beautiful pieces of art all over their community, drawing thousands of people to their downtown. Um, and so, just seeing art as an economic, uh, force, as a way to increase tourism, as a way to provide space for people to be known and seen, um, even at the small level, at the Jackson or the Albean level, um, is a really big deal. So, I'm really, I'm very supportive of this. I want to make sure that we, I want to be sensitive to the people who are experts in this work, who do this work for a living. We really need to rely on them for how we go forward, uh, that way they're not getting into too much trouble.
Yeah. I mean, the sample ordinances that I've looked at, it, it typically, most of them, I haven't looked at a whole bunch, but most of them, uh, have a number of, of positions like every board does, and it specifies that a number will be, uh, ex, it's, it's worded like every board does. And it specifies that a number will be, it's worded differently, but essentially visual arts, you know, performing arts, music, that somebody that represents that is very knowledgeable in that. And that's, I think that's what you're saying. And then also someone that I've seen is also talked about the, you know, the philanthropic and the endowment aspect of it. And there's a certain skill set. If you're very good at it, you can raise funds. You might not be able to paint a picture, you certainly might not be able to sing, but that's a tremendous contribution to that, and it makes it worthwhile. So, any objections to having our City Manager and City Attorney work on an ordinance so that we can consider that? Councilwoman Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. So could this be, these two things, well, F and G be together?
No.
As two different things?
Absolutely.
Arts and culture, okay, so you said when you think of arts and culture, it's more like performing arts. Is that?
Visual arts, performing arts, music, lots of things that are arts. Things I wouldn't even think of. And probably things that I personally wouldn't consider art, but are. Parks, Recreation, Trails, I see that as something different and a different skill set to put on the board, to be honest. I mean, I personally don't know, and this is not disrespect of anybody, I have no idea what expertise Cliff Roberts, Cliff Harris, I'm sorry, Cliff Harris has in trails and parks. But I know he is recognized within our community for music. Noble Schuler is recognized as an artist. They have an art center. I don't know what he knows about trails. I know Mark Lully knows an awful lot about trails. So I see these as two distinctly different things.
That wouldn't fall under Recreation?
Not in my mind, no. But we'll wait and see what the Attorney and City Manager come up with. And if the consensus from councils, oh, no, this should all be combined, then we'll probably end up there. I don't see it that way, but that's me. So the general consensus is, so I'd ask the City Manager and City Attorney to work together on that. Let's see here. Next item is not establishing, at least at this point, not establishing any kind of board or anything. It is essentially taking what's going on in our community right now and formalizing that process. Right now, we have various corporations and civic organizations and churches that step up and do things and take on maintenance for the city in various, you know, methods. I'll give you three examples. Castor Concepts, they, for several years, have been cutting the grass down around the bandshell, at least during the summer months when we're doing the concerts. I know they've trimmed some shrubs, they've done some painting. And that's a private entity that's supporting in partnership with the city. First Baptist Church, one week out of every year, they do a whole bunch of community service things. They paint fire hydrants, they paint city buildings to do a variety of things. Homestead Bank, they paint the curbs on Superior Street, they put mulch into flower pots, they work with citizens to beautify, as does Knopf Insulation. What I'm saying is, if we can formalize this in some fashion, we can avoid some hurt feelings that happen from time to time by having it defined in writing what that entity is going to take on, no more, no less, so there's no misunderstanding. If there are liability issues, if there's other things that need to be captured, it's essentially a contract so that everybody knows what they're going to do. I think we then, if we do this in a formal program, we can convince other businesses, other churches, other civic organizations to, hey, I can be part of that. And we can recognize them in a variety of ways, and it will multiply the resources of what the city can get done. We're not talking about taking work away from city employees. I think everybody in here, everybody on council, everybody watching the livestream at home recognizes that we have lots of work, and we don't have lots of city employees and lots of resources. So I'm asking that the council consider making this a formal program, a private, public partnership program. And again, I would ask the City Attorney and the City Manager to work together to come up with the structure for that. I think everybody, hopefully, I have a stack of them here as, just as an example. And this came from Ypsilanti, it's called Adopt a Park. We have somebody that might be familiar with it, having come from Ypsilanti. Councilwoman Reed.
We've done that before here in Albion, too, because when we first built the Victory Park, different church organizations, and I was with the NHTC, and we adopted a month that we would go out every week and clean around there and keep everything. And other organizations did the same thing. So that is a work.
Councilwoman Williamson.
A hundred percent agree that we should do something like this. I do think that we need to make sure that it is as less bureaucratic as possible. Voluntheism is something that is precious in this community, and people do it because it's easy and it's something that can be big bang for their buck. So let's not bog it down in a bunch of paperwork so that no one wants to do it. So let's make sure that however this comes forward, that we're not, although I appreciate it when it came from its name, that's kind of a lot. And we need to make sure we can make it as easy as possible for people to volunteer.
Absolutely. Not recommending that we replicate this. It's just an example that this isn't a novel idea. And it's to facilitate more of this happening and giving credit to our corporate, religious, and civic organization partners. So the general consensus is to move forward with this. City Attorney, do you have concerns and questions?
So one thing I would just, I would just say, so our Labor Council provided a written opinion regarding this to both the Manager and I. That's probably something the council's going to want to discuss in a closed session at a future meeting before enacting anything because it will bear on this and it's probably how we'll structure it. I think the City Manager and I can certainly have some discussions about how to, in theory, set this up. But based upon some of the comments from our Labor Council, we're going to have to be very careful in how we structure it, and it's going to have to be somewhat narrowly tailored. So we can get into more detail about that in a closed session because that opinion's obviously subject to attorney-client privilege.
All right. Next item is request approval for boards that commission appointments. Recognizing it's now nine o'clock, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve all of these as with one. But if anybody has a specific issue concerned, we certainly can deal with it individually. But what they are is reapportment, two reapportments, and that would be Mr. Scott Evans. His current term on the Downtown Development Authority expires at the end of December. It's just simply to reappoint that. He wishes to continue serving. He's done a very good service to the city. And I'd like my colleagues to confirm that. Again, Ms. Nidia Wolf on the DDA, her term would expire in 2022. She's working on a couple of projects. She has some unique background on that. Mr. Herm McCall, it's a partial term. It would expire next July. He has served on that board well and faithful in the past. There are two temporary positions that are being added to the EDC under state statute, and that is when the Economic Development Corporation designates a project. And what can be a project is, you know, fairly loose. And so in this case, the project that the EDC has designated at the last meeting, which was last week, is workforce development. And so the application and the appointment for one of those needs to be somebody who's an expert, knowledgeable, focused in that area. You can look at Ms. Norris's credentials in here in her application. Quite impressive. The other for designating the second person, which again, is a temporary position on the board. It's addition, but it is on the same board. The term expires when the project is over. So one of them to be appointed is an expert in the area of the project, and that's Ms. Norris, who is an expert in workforce development, lots of accolades and awards and achievements. And the other is an individual who is specific to represent the most affected population. Folks I've talked with, and personally, I believe that the most affected population, the part of the population that stands, of Albion that stands the most to gain, that has the biggest challenges, predominantly reside in Precinct One. And so it's not on here for confirmation. It will be on probably the next meeting, but in December. And I can't think of anybody that would do a better job representing the residents of Precinct One than the Precinct One councilperson, Ms. Clark. So it's not on here. We're not confirming her tonight. I'm just explaining the background and how we got to having two temporary additional positions focused on workforce. So, may I have a, Ms. Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. Can we do these individually, please?
Is there a reason?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment on a couple.
Okay. I have no objection to that. First for confirmation is a reapportment of Mr. Scott Evans to the DDA, term to expire 12/31/2023. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support? Okay, discussion? Do you have comments, Ms. Lawler?
No.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor to reappoint Scott Evans to the DDA, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, he is, his reapportment is confirmed. Ms. Nidia Wolf, reapportment to the DDA, term to expire 12/31/2022. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Support? Okay, discussion? Ms. Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you tell me if I'm right or wrong? You said that when you appoint people to these boards and commissions, that it couldn't be personal, right?
I don't.
Like just saying no, just because you don't like a person or something like that? You said that can't be that, right?
I said that I would not appoint people on the basis of who I like and don't like. But I would say that my understanding of the charter and the authority that has been provided to the, is delegated to the mayor. And after having conversations with the City Attorney, the mayor goes to whatever process the mayor wishes to go through to find the person that he wishes to appoint. The application process is standard for all boards and commissions. There's an application. It's the same application. And that person is, I use the term vetted to make sure they're not in default to the city. And of the applications, the mayor selects who he wishes to, he or she wishes to appoint. I've selected Ms. Nidia Wolf, and now it's here for confirmation.
Okay. And that's acceptable, and I do understand that. I just want to make it known to the public that I do remember and recall that we were asked to, once before, to say why we had voted down Ms. Nidia for a couple of other positions on the DDA. So I just want to make it known that, and it had to be some type of public relation, or that they weren't being very good to the public, for lack of better words. But I will be voting this down because there was an instance where a nonprofit was trying to get funding. And Ms. Nidia said that this nonprofit was not a nonprofit and that people should not give. Well, it boiled down to that this nonprofit did have their nonprofit license, and they were a nonprofit. So this is why, if it has to come before me as being in a, for a public service, I don't think that was appropriate. So this is the reason why my decisions for voting no was made. And I just want to make it known to the public that I will be voting no for this.
Okay. Any other comments? City Attorney Hart.
Just because I, for purposes of clarification, as this particular appointment has come up in the past, this is a seat different than one that has previously been voted on? Is that correct?
You know, there's so many of them that are vacant that need to be filled before the end of the month. I'm going to say that this was a reapportment, but it's to appoint to the DDA. I think that the circumstances have changed from the first time that Ms. Wolf was put forward for reapportment to her current position. And what has changed is the residents from Precinct Three, I believe there were over thirty of them, signed a petition supporting her. That was submitted after the first time I put her forward for reapportment. And so that is new information since the first time she was put forward for reapportment. Councilwoman Spicer.
I guess I'd just like to hear what Attorney Hart was going to say. I think he was alluding to something.
No, I just typically, what I was just getting at is typically when we have an appointment and it's voted down, you can appoint someone to a different seat on that board. It's just there's specific limited instances where you can go back and vote again. And the mayor just made his position on that issue known. I just, I wanted to confirm that it wasn't...
A previous?
Yeah, a previous appointment that the council had voted down because that would be an issue. But the mayor just articulated his reasons for that. So that was the only reason why I brought it up.
Thank you. Councilman Smith.
Just for full disclosure, this has come up before in the past, so we'll just go ahead and nip it in the bud now. Ms. Wolf was the campaign finance director of my campaign. She took care of the books on my campaign. I did not, she and my campaign manager were signed on the account. I was not. I did not touch a penny in my account. I left it to those two. And it is still that way. The account will remain open at this point in the event I choose to run against next year. Other than that, the account will lay dormant. I voted for Ms. Wolf the last time in 2016 when she ran for City Council. She's a very fine woman, not only personally, but knowing her professionally. When I took over running the car shows from her, she was very articulate and very helpful in helping me get that going. And now I not only run one show, I don't run two shows, I now run three shows in and around out. But I just did, I did want to make it clear that we did have a relationship during my campaign as far as her being a part of my campaign committee.
Okay. Any other comments by council? Ms. Snyder, please read the roll. This is for the reapportment of Ms. Nidia Wolf to the DDA.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
No.
Spicer?
No.
Williamson?
Yes.
And Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Okay, next individual is Mr. Herm McCall. It's to appoint him to a currently vacant position on the Economic Development Corporation Board. This is not a reapportment because Mr. McCall is not currently on that board. But this is to appoint him to a partial term, which would expire on the first of July of next year, 2020. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on Mr. McCall? Seeing none? Please read the roll.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Okay. Next individual is Ms. Annette Norris for appointment to the Economic Development Corporation Workforce Development Project, term to expire at completion of the project. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there a discussion? Seeing none? Please read the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes. Okay. Now we've come to future agenda items. Council members have future, well, we'll start with the City Attorney because I'm sure you have at least one.
Yes. I mean, well, I'm going to be speaking with the City Manager about the various ordinances that you passed this with, so I won't.
Sir, would you yield for a minute? I'm sorry, Ms. Lawler needs to leave. Do you have future agenda items?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. So I'm not going to promise those all to you by the next council meeting, but they will be forthcoming. But I do want to add, and I've spoken to the City Manager about this, we need to do our annual resolution for our insurance opt-out.
Okay.
So we'll have that for the first meeting in December.
Okay. Councilman Williamson.
So I know it's getting cold, or has been cold for a few days now, and we're heading into the winter months, but it's okay to think about spring. We have a pretty restrictive zoning policy and ordinance around downtown and outdoor cafes and possibility of having people be able to eat outside, be served outside, enjoy a drink outside along downtown. I would like the council to consider moving forward on changing that policy to allow it to be less restrictive, longer periods, allow congestion traffic through areas where people are being served similar to other cities that have outdoor services. Not just me personally wanting to sit outside and have a beer either. This has been brought to my attention by several business owners and operators in the downtown area who would like to be able to serve their beer or baked goods or their tacos along the street. who would like to be able to serve their beer or baked goods or their tacos along the street downtown and, and have the city be supportive of that. So I would like to see at least a discussion or presentation about what the laws and zoning are currently, and then talk about how we might be able to change those before next spring. That way we can be more inclusive for downtown business. Yes?
Okay, and so I'm gonna ask for clarification...
I'll send an email to everybody.
No, 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 please for just a second. You're asking for that to be at a future agenda when you're here?
Oh.
So you're not gonna be here on the, you're not gonna be here on the second, but you will be here on the 16th?
Sure, let's do it for the 16th. I'm sorry that I'm...
No, no. No, no, I don't mean it that way, Councilman Williamson. I just want, I don't want to put it on next, you know, on the second, and you're not gonna be here.
You're not gonna be here, yes.
Okay.
So the 16th, we don't talk on the next...
Okay, but if you'll make a note on the 16th. City Attorney Hartis?
So what I was just gonna add there, and, and in partial answer to Councilmember Williamson's questions, I mean, what he's referring to, we have a separate business ordinance for outdoor and sidewalk cafes. I don't know that it would actually require modification of their zoning, which is a much larger and more grand undertaking. However, our current ordinance does reference the former zoning section. So I mean, it's probably something that we could look at updating, but just an FYI, I don't think we need to necessarily modify the zoning. I think we could just modify our business ordinance.
Okay.
Perfect, that's even better.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmembers have future agenda items? Okay. All right. Also, or what I want to make sure that we have on the agenda for the second of December is a presentation and review of the budget. We spent five hours on Saturday going through that, was informative. And so we need to, to continue with that. And I'll reiterate what I, what I said at the end of Saturday, which is a lot of great work, lots of good feedback and input back from council. And I'm hoping that what is, we are presented with is at a minimum, a, maybe it's two different budgets and we have an option, but I would like to see a little bit of change in what we went over on Saturday just on the basis of if you could incorporate some of the, of the comments and feedback. That's what I'm asking you to consider doing. So on the second of December, a review of the 2020 budget, and the setting of the city manager's goals and priorities and performance objectives. And in leading up to that, if you would please distribute amongst council, send out your, you've got all of our feedback, put that together and send it to us. That's your earliest opportunity so that we can read that. Councilman Williamson, if you have comments or anything else on that, you can provide that to another council member or myself, or directly back, whatever. So it's the budget, city manager's goals and objectives, which I think that will take up a fair amount of time. But if you look, if anybody goes on the city website, you'll notice that there are a lot of vacant boards and commission seats, all told, now that we did some this evening. But by the end of December, there's almost two dozen. So there'll be many of those that will be put forward. Some very important ones, like we have a very upstanding citizen, Mr. Lang. His term is coming to an end. And I'm asking people that are serving in current terms, if they wish to, to continue serving, please submit an application, because things have changed since you were appointed. If there are people in the community that are willing to serve on a board or commission, you can go on the city website, you can talk to me, you can talk to your council representative. And we're looking for people that are willing to step up and serve the community on a, on a board, commissioner board. So on the next agenda, there'll be a variety of appointments. One of those will be Ms. Clark for the EDC for workforce, and there's a variety of other things. But you'll see those on the agenda for the, for the remainder of the council meetings this year. Any other future agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move to public comments. Individuals wishing to make public comment this evening, please come forward, state your name and address. Please ask you, stick with, within the three minute, and everybody give due respect and attention.
My name is Rick Lang. I live at 810 Haven Road. I like a lot of what I'm hearing, the ideas of maybe their advisory boards or councils. To me, it seemed like a great idea to have an organized way of getting input to responsible council people. But also having people working outward and talking to their friends and neighbors about ideas that are being put forward. So I, I, I think that's a super idea. On the point of arts and culture, I'd like to offer a couple of suggestions as to what that can include. Albion has some great architecture. That's art and culture, I think. We have a very interesting history, culture. We have a very active sister city group, culture. The sister city group has been struggling with ways of getting some signage in Albion to honor the sister city group, which has signage in Noi Zee about Albion. So maybe that's a little bit art, I don't know. But a lot of this fits together. I, I think it's really encouraging to hear all this being put forward as ideas to keep the forward momentum going for Albion. And you have to apply to be reappointed?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to know, I'm saying is, if I'm gonna put somebody forward for an appointment, I'm, I don't recall off the top of my head how long your appointment was, your term, but certainly things have changed. And if they happen, it'll be a pretty easy application. So yes, for reappointment, I'm asking people to... Further public comments this evening?
Hi, my name is Jada Stewart. I go to Albion College, sophomore. I had a question for one of the two committees, committees involving permanent parks and the cultural commission. Are there certain requirements you have to have in order to join one or like contribute ideas?
Go ahead and complete your statement, and that, before the night's out, I'll address that.
Okay, so for one of the two commissions, like the recreation commission or the culture commission, do you have to have, like meet certain requirements in order to join it or contribute ideas to it?
By the, by our rules, we're not allowed to respond.
He will leave.
Okay.
Just don't leave.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Desma Hallman. I'm also a sophomore at Albion College, as you might be able to tell. I had a question specifically for you, Councilwoman Clark. I wanted to know, like, as I was clapping for you for getting elected, I wanted to know, like, what was a mayor pro tempore? Is that how you say it?
Yeah.
You know, like, like, could you elaborate on what that job, like, what do they do? Because I was clapping, and I'm like, I don't even know what I'm clapping for.
Don't leave, you tell me.
Thank you.
What was your last name, I'm sorry?
Oh.
Further public comments?
John Tracy, Director of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement. I just want to remind everybody that tomorrow, the New Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 100, goes into effect. The ordinance is on the city website, and it is interactive. So if anybody has any questions about that at any point in time, please don't hesitate to contact me. And it is, starts tomorrow. So you'll find that it's quite a different ordinance, very much different than what was originally took place in 84.
Thank you, and thank you for your very hard work on that. Further public comments this evening? Seeing none, I'll invite our county commissioner.
No, 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 no.
Come on, guys.
Why?
We're just getting warmed up. I saw, I saw Councilmember Williamson go, oh my gosh, man, we're never gonna get out of here. I know. Sorry. I'm sorry, I saw that, man. You're good, no, you're good, though.
You can pick on me.
No, it's okay, it's okay. I have a, yeah, I was gonna say, I have a tendency to carry on a little bit. All right, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager McClary, Ms. Haley, residents of the city of Albion with a gavel, and the folks watching this evening. Good evening, Gary Tompkins, your county commissioner. I'll be very quick this evening. First and foremost, at our recent county commission meeting we had, I would say probably approaching two weeks ago, we, we voted and approved a request from the Parks and Rec Committee to put a .2 mil, millage on the ballot for the, at that time, the March 2020 ballot. That since changed based on some other issues that are happening, so you're most likely gonna see that, that millage request's gonna go in probably August of 2020. It'll generate about $730,000 collectively throughout the county, with 50% of it going to the county and the other 50% going to municipalities and townships based on population. So what that would mean for Albion potentially is $23,121 in terms of your share of what that millage would be. Now, there are some specific things to how, what you can and can't spend on. Certainly, and I'll be providing those details going forward, but I wanted to let you know that the decision was made at our last county commission meeting to go ahead and allow the people to vote on that in, in most likely August. So just something to keep in mind there, because I know you guys obviously were talking about trails and, and recreation and parks this evening, so. And then finally, real quickly, my cards. As you guys know, I've been on the road funding situation, and I will never give up that fight. And obviously, I've been passing out these cards to a lot of people. And these cards are, for folks watching at home, these are calling your representatives, their phone numbers, with my information on it. If they don't know who I am, they'll find out who I am if they call me. But continue the fight, continue to push it. If you have not had a chance to call, go ahead and call them. Because I would be, it would be wonderful to me to find out what they say to you versus what they won't talk to me. So interesting enough, so again, don't keep up the fight, ask them the tough questions. They work for us. They work for me as too as well, because I'm a citizen just as much as everybody else is, aside from that. So take advantage of the opportunity and give them a call and ask them the question. Because ironically, if you'll notice, to those of you that might have been in Eggs and Issues on Friday, what did we hear? We heard one lobbying, about one back at each other, just lobbing at each other. That's what we deal with, and that's the unfortunate thing, is rather than getting anything done, we're just lobbing things at each other. And I think we've gotta change that. So hopefully, by putting some pressure on them and get them, all I'm looking for is just an opportunity to, to have a conversation, that's all I'm asking for. And that goes out to anybody and everybody. And with that being said, being the fact I was very quick tonight, I'm gonna take the opportunity to wish each and every one of you, including the folks watching in here, a very happy Thanksgiving. Hope all of you get a chance to take some time with your families. I know I will, hopefully, and not talk about roads. We'll actually have a, actually have a good dinner and relax and enjoy your family. So again, happy Thanksgiving to each and every one of you. Thank you.
Oh, that's a record.
See? Shane had put the pressure on me, I know, exactly.
Thank you, sir. Okay, and next up, seeing no further public comments, we'll turn to the city manager for the city manager's report.
Your Honor, members of council, you received the city manager's report from November 14th. I first want to just say a quick thanks to Linda for all of her hard work with Rising Tide and everything she's done to help us locally. We sincerely appreciate all of her hard work. Also, welcome to our new council member, Al Smith. We, I am looking forward to working with you as well as with the rest of the council on many exciting issues and challenges that we have going on. So welcome to you. Council, I've provided you with a breakdown of some of the meetings of interest that I've attended over the past couple weeks. I touched on the fiscal year 2020 budget preparation, and that will be coming back up on your December 2nd meeting agenda. I also provided you some information on the background on one of the property tax assessment issues that we're dealing with. And I, I want to thank Mr. Cunningham for his overview of the issue that we're dealing with generally and answering questions. We definitely appreciate his insight and input. You received a presentation from our interim director of public services on the status of the Irwin Avenue reconstruction project. And I do apologize that I had a second section on that very issue that somehow carried over from my last report, so I apologize. I provided you with an update on the Rising Tide, Project Rising Tide, and where we are, are at with that project currently. I, I addressed the issue of council, city manager, email communications. And I did outline to the council, I sincerely appreciate council's efforts to try to keep me informed of, of many, many important issues and communications that are going back and forth. I do have to say, I am overwhelmed with the, with the number of emails that I get, not just from council members, but my staff too, has been making a concerted effort to try to keep me informed of many routine email communications. I do want to tell you, I don't need to be involved in all of those communications. I now have over 600 email communications that are still sitting in my inbox. I think over time, we will be working on whittling those down. And as we communicate more on, on what my expectations are in terms of what I need to be involved in, as well as what communications I encourage council to have directly with city staff that I may not need to be involved in, I think we'll get a better handle on those email communications. But thank you so much for, for making an effort to, to keep me involved in those. I do appreciate your kind consideration. I noted for you that we will be discussing at the December 2nd meeting the city's participation in the BidNet and Mitten, or Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network Purchasing Group. It is an important group for us to be involved in as we're working on purchasing and bidding. It's a free service to us. And I say free with the caveat that there is an initial $195 fee, which goes for the cost of getting the information out to our local vendors that the city will be participating in the program. But it is a very valuable program, and I encourage us to participate in it. I also noted for you that the city manager's goals and priorities will be on the December 2nd meeting agenda for further discussion, including the additional input that we, and suggestions that I have received from individual council members. And that is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember comments? Councilman Williamson?
Just a reminder that I won't be here on December 2nd, since we've talked about it a few times now. I will miss you all, but I will be out.
Okay. Councilwoman Spicer?
Thank you. Just wanted to say happy, have a happy Thanksgiving to all of my council members and to the public and the visitors in the chambers.
Councilman Smith?
All right, in, in the light of time, I'll go for brevity. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much to each and every person who was supportive of myself and my campaign. It was a heck of a time. It was a fun time, it was not so fun time, depending on where you were and how you looked at it. But there, there were many wonderful people who helped me get to where I am. The only real promise that I made was that I was going to work for Albion, and I will keep that promise at each and every moment that I'm awake. To the people at my precinct, I have promised that I will hold monthly meetings. Hopefully, I will be getting that started by next month. Watch this space. I will be letting everyone know what the schedule will be for that. Thank you very much.
I'll, I'll keep my comments relatively short. Is there an Irwin Avenue update, Town Hall meeting this week?
To my knowledge, no.
Okay. All right. We had one scheduled last week because of the weather and delays, and so I, there may be one coming up next week or whatever. But what I want to say is to all of my colleagues on council, this was a very professional, enjoyable meeting. We had some disagreements, but we had no, no animosity, and that's, that's very nice. I will address the two questions, and then if, if I miss something, Ms. Clark will, Councilwoman Clark will come back. So one question was, what are the membership, what are the eligibility requirements to sit on, on the arts and recreation, et cetera? The ordinance or the, the rules, et cetera, for those two in specific will be developed. And as we had some discussion, some of those positions will be specific to require that you have expertise in the arts. you have expertise in the arts. There'll be other, I assume, or I believe, we'll get to where there'll be other people on the Arts Commission that have other skill sets. But the eligibility in the appointment process, my belief it will be the same as we do for others, which is, there is a city application, you fill that out, you have to be a register, you have to be an elector of the city, so you need to be a resident within the city limits. For college students, we'll get you an answer, I don't know what the answer is. So, I mean, if you live, if you're from Chicago and you're here going to college, are you an elector of the city? We'll get an answer from the city attorney. But then you're, as we discussed earlier, they, the city looks to see if you are in default financially to the city. But for the Arts Committee, and for all of the boards and commissions, the desire is to have people that represent the community of Albion that have expertise in those areas. The other question is, what are the duties of the mayor pro tem? Ms. Clark, do you want to address that?
No.
Okay, I will address that. Okay, so the duties of the, the duties of the mayor pro tem is, as you saw, it is elected by the council representatives, who they think that should be. It's a position of honor and respect, and the specific duties, the mayor has some duties, but the mayor is not always here, I'm gonna get a vacation. And when the mayor is not present, then the mayor pro tem steps into that role. So if I don't show up at a council meeting, if I'm out of town, whatever it might be, then the duties for chairing the meetings fall to the mayor pro tem. I was asked a question, well, does that mean if you're not, if you're not gonna be here and the mayor pro tem's gonna chair the meetings, you're still gonna make all those decisions that go on behind the scenes? And open to meeting act, there aren't any behind the scenes decisions, and I don't get any special reports, so...
Also, what happens when you don't come back from vacation? Like, you leave and you never come back?
That's a very good question, and I know there's an answer. What's the answer?
The mayor pro tem takes your side.
If I die, mayor pro tem becomes the mayor? Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so, okay, maybe I shouldn't say it, but if, but if I become deceased, then the mayor pro tem becomes the mayor. Okay. Uh, yeah, I don't plan on that happening, but you never know. I know, I had a couple of other things, but it is getting late. I thank all my colleagues again, I'm gonna make a press and a push, if you have an interest that you're willing to serve on a border commission, if you're willing to continue serving in a current or there's something else, please make that known, fill out that application. We have a lot of board seats to fill, but I see great things ahead for the city, and it's a pleasure to work with my colleagues, and welcome, Mr. Smith. May I have a motion to excuse absent council members?
So moved.
Okay, the only one we have is Councilmember Lawler, who was here at the beginning, but it's been moved and supported, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved. Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.